Okay, seeing that it's seven o'clock, we'll open the meeting of the Halifax Planning Board at 399 Plymouth Street in Halifax. The meeting begins at 7:00 PM in the Selectmen's Meeting Room, Thursday, November 21st, 2024. I announced that the Planning Board meeting is being recorded by Area 58 and can be reviewed on YouTube. President at tonight's meeting is Brendan Elliott, Amy Trup, Bert Gaynor, and Rick Mary. Okay, let's see. What's our appointments? This might as well get rolling. Continue the hearing on Hilldale Lane for approval of definitive plan subdivision modification. We have a note here that Conservation approved the revised plans dated 9/9/24 to shorten the roadway. Mr. Webby, how are you?
I'm well, thanks. How are you guys? Can I put this here? I don't know where to put it.
Sure, sure.
Okay. With me is Scott Burgess. Scott owns the big parcel of land and the right of way for Hilldale Lane. Hilldale Lane was approved previously by Planning Board in 2005. Scott has since purchased the property and what he would like to do is shorten the length of Hilldale Lane by 200 and 250 feet-ish so that we don't have to cross this wetland. So we kept everything just to the south of the wetlands. Last time we were here with you people was June of 2023 and then you said, you know, please go to the Conservation Commission and it took us from June to October this year to finally get an order of conditions. So we have an order of conditions to construct this roadway. So what we're asking for from you people is to be able to amend the 2005 subdivision that got approved down to this size. We have since, I do have the old plan underneath there, but we have one less lot than what was approved in 2005, just so you know. So we've shortened the road and we've eliminated all.
Joe, how many lots were there on the last proposal?
A lot?
There were two, and how many lots is being proposed on this one?
It's one, two, three, four. The last is, I'm not sure if we changed anything between the previous plan had one, two, three, four, five, six. This already have a house on it and this one has a house. And there was a house here, here, and there. So currently Hilldale Lane now is just gravel. Mr. Burgess is willing to obviously pave this to your regulations in and install water. So you'll be, the water service come in, hydrants.
What about the underground utilities?
We've asked for a waiver from that because there's already holes down to this spot here. I believe we asked for a waiver.
I think I remember that you did. I just wanted to know what the allowed utility pools overhead.
Yes, yes. They already have overhead wires to come right into here.
Joe, when was the last time it went in front of the ZBA? Do you remember? From the zoning board?
They went to the, not Scott, but right before Scott.
Brown?
Yeah. It was the Brown or the one before Brown, but somebody went in there to the ZBA for multifamilies. And I believe something was approved. I wasn't part of any of that, so I don't know.
Which was over two years ago now anyway, right? Doesn't that apply?
Yes.
I was just asking, because...
I would think so. What about Conservation looked at this? What about drainage and all that kind of thing?
The drainage is exactly the same as originally approved in 2005. We have a drainage structure right at the front to pick up the first 100 feet here and then after that it's sheet draining, draining both ways into the drainage basin in this area. That has all been approved by Conservation Commission.
When was that, Joe? When did they approve it?
September 9th.
They approved it in October of this year.
Okay. Yeah, I think it says it here.
I do have a copy of just the front two pages of the order of conditions if you'd like. I didn't copy the whole thing. So that's just the first two pages.
Do we have the file on this? Because it's not on my card.
Yeah, it's like a 19-page order of conditions.
Remember the last time you guys were here, there were some residents from Hilldale Lane that were concerned about there not being sidewalks for their ability to, you know, walk and get to, you know, through the neighborhood. Whether that's, you know, I'm just trying to think of the things of the last time you were here, obviously being a year and a half ago, right? But I remember that. And then also, wasn't there something that we had to discuss too about getting an extra fire hydrant down there or by shortening it, we didn't have to do the fire hydrant? Is that what it was?
By shortening, I wouldn't have to, but I'm doing it anyway.
Right, okay, that's what it was, yeah, yeah.
And I think you were gonna not put water down there too, right? Sorry, I can't see you behind that.
No, the E&amp;A didn't show on me.
No, I know, but the last time you were here, you were talking about not doing water. Am I wrong on that thought process?
You're right, you're right.
Okay.
It has since changed.
Yeah.
He's willing to put the water line in and hydrant.
Yeah, so that's...
I'll defer to you guys on this, specifically to you, Rick, if I can. What is the impact of shortening or tightening the road from 30 feet to 22 feet? I mean, does that have a major impact on...
No, it's not like an highly traveled road.
Right.
Just enough room for a couple of cars to pass, so how often is that going to happen?
Yeah.
It's like my driveway's 22 feet wide. It's a two-lot subdivision.
Yeah.
You know, once in a while I might meet my neighbor and, you know, you get by each other, but I don't see the need of it.
Gotcha.
It will be if I could, Brendan. And there's also going to be, so it's going to be 22 feet wide and then another foot of cape guard around on the side. So typically we can drive over.
Yeah, I gotcha.
So on a modification of a subdivision, do we have to have a hearing?
I think you opened a hearing.
Yeah.
But it's been a year and a half.
It's been a long time, yeah.
Never closed it though, right?
Not that I, I think you, my recollection is you gave me direction, go through the Conservation Commission.
Correct.
And then part of that was, it was, I don't want to call it disruption at the conservation level, but there was some...
Disruption?
Disruption. And then we, so we ultimately, we had to get it redelineated, which was done, and then we had to hire ecosystem to check the delineation. So those all took months, right, really? And then we finally got back into the discussion of, you know, what can get approved and got it approved.
So Joe, is Hilldale Lane going to remain a private way if this goes through?
Tell me. I don't know.
I think we should...
You can or can't? You guys can accept it or not accept it? I don't know.
What about a peer review on this?
I think a peer review is necessary. That's just my opinion.
I do too.
I believe that Pat Brennan's already...
Yeah.
...reviewed it, because I can remember going out there with Pass and digging holes in the drain adjustment.
I think that it would be only fair to make sure that A, we have the folder here so that we can look at all the documents, make sure the hearing is still open, make sure that in meeting minutes we didn't close it, because I don't recall that. We could have continued it, but I don't know. We should make sure that it is peer reviewed, even if it's just that Pat Brennan confirms it and that the abutters are aware that this is going through where the hearing has been delayed a year and a half and they're not here. And I'm sure they would be.
Did Pat review it before? So what have you done since he reviewed it? Just shortened the road?
No, we, no, the length of the road has stayed the same.
Yeah. Since he reviewed it? Since he reviewed it?
Since he reviewed it, yes.
The end of the last meeting was just, we gave Mr. Webby those instructions to go to Conservation and obviously he got held up there for obviously reasons outside of his control, but it was continued. I'm a firm believer that everything needs to go for a peer review, but I'm also a firm believer in moving things along the right way and not just continuing to send people on this, you know my phrase, this hamster wheel of death, right? So I'm sure that those abutters that, or residents that, you know, were lobbying for a sidewalk would probably prefer to get some pavement down there so that they can, if they are going to walk, at least they can walk on some pavement versus a sidewalk, right? To have this be held up any further since you finally got through Conservation, I don't personally think, all things being equal, but...
I mean, that one of the things that they were worried about is issues and I think we should make sure because they're not here and they usually would be if something was happening.
But that's, again, it goes back to, that's not their fault, right? I mean, our agenda is clearly stated for the public, that anybody that would like to see it, so that they know. That's why some people are here for certain things. And to be honest with you, Hilldale Lane has been on this agenda since I got on the board and there's a couple other subdivisions that we have got caught in the mud and it seems like we're on the home stretch here and if everybody's given those approvals, I'd have a hard time saying, why wouldn't we move it forward? And if there are conditions, then maybe we should discuss what the conditions are for final approval, but to start sending them back down the rabbit hole, I think, might do more harm than good.
I don't think one meeting is a rabbit hole. I think that one question I would have right here is 235-32A2 about the heavy-duty, high-density polythan HDP pipe, and I think we should make sure on that. I'm not sure on that. I think that we should be making sure as we're actually here for the residents and not the developer and the quickness of it. And then also the, you know, allowing the smaller street and it's also opening up the rest of the town for having to do things set on precedent and it's a careful decision to be made. We don't even have the file here to look at everything.
Yeah. No, I agree with that part.
So I think one meeting is, and just double checking and making sure that we cross RTs and dot RI's is a very good idea. It's a site plan modification, so this site plan should be sent out to all the other boards and we should have 30 days to get the comments back.
I know, and wasn't there a discussion too also on the radius as far as the fire trucks getting through and, and I do know, I had a discussion actually today with Steve Haywood that Hilldale Lane is certainly a non-accepted street and it's not being plowed. And so I said, well, what's the criteria for that? And he said, basically Hilldale Lane is a driveway. It's, but maybe paving it, and again, like you said, narrowing it down is going to even put more restriction on it. And I agree, I think it should be reviewed.
I'll make a motion to have it peer reviewed, make sure the site plan is sent around to all other boards and continue the hearing to the next meeting on December 5th, 2024, 7 o'clock.
Rick, do you have anything to add on this?
No, no.
Is the, Joe, is the drainage, is that a leaching drain or is that connected?
Yeah, we have a leaching basin or a leaching trench right in the front, right in this area.
Is a type 2 being drawn forward or is it going to remain a leaching drain?
This is strictly a drainage, leaching drain, right? We have no outlet for this. This, however, we do have. So majority of the road will go into this basin and that has a spillway to the wetlands if we need it.
So nothing goes on the street?
So nothing goes on the Haywood Street or leaches on it?
No, nothing can go, yeah. That's why, it was one of the things we couldn't do.
Yeah.
We would love to get stuff down here, but Haywood Street is in pretty rough shape now. I'd potentially go around it.
Yeah, I would too.
Suspension on new vehicles is expensive.
All right, well, I do have a motion on the floor. I just had a couple of questions to...
Yeah, no, of course.
I do have a motion on the floor to review this, check the file, do some research on it, do our next meeting...
And make the site plan go around to each other board for comments.
Right. And when was the date on the next one?
December 5th, 2024, 7.
4th.
So I have a motion on the floor. Do I have a second?
That's not sure.
I'll second it.
Okay, a motion on the floor. I'm going to ask for a voice vote. Brendan?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Rick?
Yep.
4-0.
On the, I understand the peer review. I have no problem with sending anything to Pat or anybody.
I was just going to go through that with you as far as...
Do you need nine sets, bring them up to...
I think, I think that they need to go around to all the boards, just like put it into the town clerk. The town clerk sends them around to everybody and make sure that we're all up to date with the new plan, because the old plan went around, but not the new plan, right?
This is still, yeah, June 2023, this is it.
Okay, so then if we already have those plans, then we just need to electronically send it around to everybody. Do we have an electronic copy, right? From back then?
I want to say, I assume so.
You can make sure.
Julian was the secretary.
If we have it, then we should, but if we need it, then we'll ask you. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Set up for Brendan?
So we'll just make sure that it goes out electronically to all the other boards, okay? So, yeah, no.
Or where it was done before?
I don't think so.
Do we need an account set up for the peer review or...
The account should be set up, but if it needs to have any more money, we should be asking.
Yeah, I think it's, unless, like you said, we checked the file and it's expired and all that stuff, we should know that before.
Well, they have a box still sitting on there.
Okay.
I'm sorry, your name, sir?
Scott Burgess. Scott is the owner of the property.
I know that, it's one to save for the record.
I know.
I think once you get the file and start to look through that, I think you'll see that everything's gonna kind of hopefully get to pull together.
Yeah, just crossing Ts and dots and Is.
Yeah.
Okay?
Great.
And I think, I think we all know, we'll go along with the 5th, but we all know next Thursday is...
Thanksgiving.
7. 5th is going to be, it's going to be tough to make.
Come fast.
Well, hopefully it'll work.
Yeah, let's, yeah, let's see what happens on the 5th.
Yeah.
Or before the 5th.
Yeah.
Okay, very good.
Thanks, Joe.
Great, thanks, Joe.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Scott.
Yeah.
All right. The Form A application for 42 Thompson Street, John Campbell, Carol Stephen Campbell. That I knew my law pen.
Oh, is it new? All right, then, keep it right there.
Is this new way?
Okay. Bust it out. Well...
Where are we?
So this is Thompson Street.
Yep.
You have...
This is John's house now?
Yep, and then, so they're going to 50 feet for 35.8 acres. That's definitely over 80,000 square feet.
Yeah, see?
It's going back to 60, so they show that it's 50 feet that far back. 160.
Is this a common driveway?
No, this will be the retreat lot. So it looks like this is the old antique cape. This is the 50 feet next to it that goes back to the, like, it's going to be a retreat lot, so it has to have over 80,000 square feet. So that is clearly happening, right? And then this is another lot right here, so they're subdividing two lots off of the entire property. So this used to encompass all this and I think this and all these other properties too, but what's left of it...
Did you see the brick? Did we see anything before or they just don't duplicate it?
No, not in recent times. They subdivided off the other lots on Thompson Street that you've seen the new houses on. That used to be that land.
Crowning Street.
Yeah. And then this, so this is 160 feet of frontage and it has 42,215 square feet, 0.98 acres. That's, yeah.
So there's only one existing house on that whole piece of property?
Right, yeah. And then the bond. Do you know, like, after you pass Pratt going towards Middleborough? And then there's the white antique, two-and-a-half-story 1800s farmhouse and then you go a little bit further down and there's the pretty cranberry red cape and the bond subdividing off of that. Do you want to get closer to this? Do you want to see the copy?
I'll, sure.
There it is. Where is that?
Do you want it?
Yeah. What did we always say about these circles that they needed to come up here and what was the reasoning for that?
Um, I think they used to be up there, I think.
Do you have a circle? For what?
I think it's to show the width.
20-foot radius. No, it's just a radius for the, for buildable lot, you know, for the house. You know, all the setbacks. Pretty sure.
Yeah, so wouldn't it have to be off the front of the, I mean, this one wouldn't matter, but if this one goes to the front to show that it's, I don't know. I forget, but I'm looking at it.
Is this going to be isolated wetlands and wetlands that are...
That doesn't look like a problem. You got plenty of land here.
Right. Oh, this is all, or this is all?
This only has three acres about, it's 35, 35.8 acres, only three acres of upland.
Yeah.
But, you know, that's plenty.
And right now, there's no proposal for House Owner on Lot 3 or no indication of it anyway?
Well, right, so an A and R, which these are, this is, that means approval not required. And it doesn't make them buildable, it's just that they're subdivided per our zoning bylaws. You know what I mean?
But if they were to go to start to build, they would have to come back and ask for...
Well, they probably won't have to come back to us, because it's not like a subdivision or a commercial lot, but they would have to go to Border Health, Conservation, do, you know, if it applies.
What's the zone, by the way?
Residential.
I assume that's residential.
John owned a lot of land. I said John owned a lot of land. Lot.
It should say on here, whatever. Lot area 40,000 square feet, lot frontage 150, setback 50, that's that. And then, see, oh, here it is, agriculture residential district. And then that's like the full picture.
Yeah.
It's not a big deal. I mean, you get plenty of room to build a house, three acres of upland, 20.
Right.
They call these executive lots, I think, too. It's just you have to have, I think it's 50-foot setbacks over there.
50-foot from...
All the lot lines.
From the lot lines?
Yeah.
I should think.
So again, it doesn't make it buildable, it just adheres to the...
Oh, yeah, still has to be for all that.
Yeah.
What's the pleasure of the board?
I'll make a motion to approve the A and R for Thompson Street, number 42 Thompson Street, owner John Campbell. Assesses parcel 116-3A, deed book 15351, page 84, plan book 62, page 850.
Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
I have a motion and a second to approve the Form A as presented. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
4-0 to them.
We'll sign them up.
Which one are we signing?
Well, we have to sign them off. So maybe what we should do is put the mile off if you want to start signing it, but we'll put it over there so it doesn't get smushied and it'll dry by the end of the meeting. You know what I mean? Date. Yeah. And then we'll hand it to you carefully and then you can put it there.
Sounds good to me.
All right. Signing isn't helping. No.
Thank you.
You bet. It seems like there's a lot of these, huh? We'll just sign them. I think there's one for Santa, too.
Check it twice.
See?
Joke's on you, Bert, we only needed two.
Might as well sign that one, too. All right, I'll stop.
To say, would it make more sense to just move them all over to this table and let everybody carry?
Two of them allowed to sit there.
Right?
I haven't any of the felt one for the top one here.
So what's the, this is, you know, time, right? Yep.
Okay. Well, I'm not looking at it anymore. Oh, do we have to sign this too?
Go through and... Yep. Some of them grab the other three.
And then the application?
Yeah.
Got it.
I think there's more for you to sign over there, Rick, of the regular ones.
Yeah, I think you got, Rick, you, there's a couple more over there you need to sign. Right? Yes.
Yeah, I've separated them all.
Yeah. Probably should keep that all together, the...
Yeah, absolutely. And then Brendan, you just have to sign the gap.
Very good.
Thank you. I'm gonna put them there.
Probably just throw them away.
Right, I'll just go like...
Done. Done.
And then the mile up end.
He's got it.
Oh.
Keep your eye on him. Trading for his, his mouth lock.
I usually leave it in the office, but just for you.
No way.
Alright, good job.
I'll leave this one out just to make sure it drives.
Yeah. And then we'll roll it over that.
Sure. Application is inside.
What's that one?
That's the mile up.
Oh, that's the mile.
We're just letting it drive.
Perfect. Okay, let's move on, uh, we have put off, uh, a, a meeting to, uh, discuss and take action on the, uh, proposed, uh, code of conduct. People, you know, we wanted opportunity to read it over and, uh, what's the, uh, pleasure of the board?
I think I still have things to discuss. Anybody else?
Why don't you fire away and then?
Um, I've reached out to a few people, attorneys, and, um, basically, they, um, are saying that we already apply to the code of ethics and one of the dangers of this is the code actually elevates the boards and town government above the people. Since you're restricted in giving the people the full story when it is deemed inappropriate by the boards, your first loyalty is always to the people and not to town government. The way, the way that, um, it is seen by not just myself, but, um, many, the ramifications, um, can be not good. It can move us to be, not be, um, within the peop, within, like, we're elected by the people, so our boss is the people. And now we would be saying that the state has more control over what we say and what we do than what the people have.
My thought on this is, um, I don't like being unprepared, which is what I felt like I was at the last meeting when we talked about this, so I went through it. Not that there's much to go through, but I also consulted a few people, including two out of the three selectmen, um, to see what they thought. I agree with Amy to a point and then the also, my, my addition to it is I don't think the answer is not having a code of ethics. I think maybe the discussion that we should be having is if not this, then what amendment should be made to this? Does that make sense?
Yeah, I understand.
Yeah, so in other words, like, I, I think there's a lot of really good things in here, I highlight it, and I've got more check marks than I have question marks. But the problem is, is when you put your name on something and you sign something, if there's any question marks, then they should be reviewed. Right, so, um, there are certain things like it says in here, I, like, I didn't under, quite understand for the respective due process, the rules of, the rules of order established by the Board of Selectmen, so members shall perform their duties in accordance with the processes and rules of order established by the Board of Selectmen. So is that just, is that a paraphrase for the Board of Selectmen have the, you know, overs, the, the final saying on our bylaws and that's what we're adhering to? Or is it, you know, implying that they can come up with things that, to force us to adhere to? Just the way they read, so that's, I think that's to Amy's point, obviously, and a, and a lawyer is gonna read through it, I'm certainly not a lawyer, right, but there's that point, um, it's recommended that the members refrain from providing public opinion on matters before the public body, as it's a violation of open meetings, like liking posts and other similar responses on social media. I think the point is, is that when we're elected officials and we go in that room downstairs and we swear ourselves in, right, we're, we're taking an oath that we will carry ourselves or hold ourselves to a higher standard than maybe we would if we weren't elected officials. But also, you know, it's bad for business to go out there and start putting discriminatory remarks on Facebook or anything like that, but if I wanna write pro-Trump on my Facebook, then that's my prerogative, that's my right. Right, so I know that I think, um, after talking with the selectmen, the general point of this was to remind us that we should be governing ourselves accordingly, right, but also when you start getting into the weeds of some of this, it does look like there's like two or three points. It's not the whole document, but there are two or three points, I think Cody did a great job putting this together. But there are some things on here, like the social media piece and also, um, the policy role of members, I wrote could slash should be worded differently.
Where are you on that one?
Uh, that's the number fifteen. Members shall respect and adhere to the town administrator's structure of town government, the Board of Selectmen shall determine the policies. The Board of Selectmen shall determine the town policies of the town with advice, information and analysis provided by town staff, by the towns, boards, committees and commissions. And by the citizens, members there shall not interfere with the administration administrative or operational function of the town. Or with the professional duties of the town staff, nor shall they impair the ability of the town staff to implement the policy decisions of the Board of Selectmen, it just seems very like, don't question the Board of Selectmen. Now, mind you, I've called two of them, so I'm not throwing either one of them under the bus, I'm not saying that I've got to.
Oh, you said, did you get that feeling when you spoke to them?
No, I got the feeling from both of them that, um, it was a, uh, it was a very good conversation with both of them and they were like, um, you know, I think that the general idea of this is more of a reminder that we should be holding ourselves to a higher standard as we are representing the town and when we're dealing with the people and trying to work through for the betterment of the town and to not let personal stuff interfere with our jobs and to not, especially not to allow it to happen on camera. Well, on camera or not, I think is more the point of this. So I think it could be worded, a couple pieces could be worded different, but I would have a hard time voting this down entirely, I would rather see us talk about what we could improve upon it. If that makes sense.
Rick, give me your comment.
No, I pretty much, I mean, I'm feeling the same thing, it was just, I'm like, I'm no lawyer either, you know, and I looked this over, it's like, you know, you know, typical, typical ethics.
Yeah.
You know, just don't be an idiot and, uh, and everything will be fine, you know, that's, that's pretty much what it comes down to.
Normally, right, you read it and, and if you were to read it just to kinda pass it through, like when I first skimmed over it and I went, I don't know if I can say this on camera, um, it was basically, don't be an a-hole. Right, which is like, yeah, no kidding, we, we try to not be like that and just as a reminder for that stuff, but then as the more conversation and the more I read into it, there were a couple points, but again, very few points, but the couple that were in there, it was like, maybe we can address that rather than either approve it as it is with the holes or decline it entirely and then have to start over, let's, I'm a big fan of if you're not a part of the, if you're not bringing solutions, you're part of the problem, so I'd rather bring solutions, that's mine.
Okay, uh, by the way, I did speak to, uh, Tom Millius today and, uh, you know, I, uh, even though he couldn't make the meeting, I asked him, uh, you know, how he felt, if he felt the same as the way he expressed his opinion the first, first time this came out and, uh, he did agree with this, like, I did inform him that the Conservation Commission did pass this at their, at their last meeting also, or approve it and, and, uh, so I just wanted to, you know, mention that to the board. I myself personally, you know, saw, I think, six or seven different paragraphs that specifically involve conduct, you know. Like you said, it seemed more common sense to me, you know, like, common sense enough, like, why do we even have to talk about this? We're all adults, we should, we should know this, you know, and bottom line, you know, they did notice too on the, on the conflict of interest thing, it cleared that thing up. We did that wrong on the last conflict of interest, uh, issue where, uh, we should have, as it, as it states, we, we should have held off on the vote, found out if there was actually a conflict of interest and then take the vote. As opposed to, you know, the members were, okay, you, you two guys, you know, recuse yourselves and we're gonna vote on it. Kinda cleared it up in my mind, we, we should have hold on timeout, let's find out, let's get an answer, which we did, get an answer, by the way, in writing. And, uh, turned out there was no conflict of interest, but in the same breath, if we had voted it that night, it, it wouldn't have been correct. I think this is separate from ethics, I think this is, this is, again, conduct, it's, it's a, it's a statement of respect, you know, to the other board members, to the other, the other members of other boards and, uh, I think, I personally think this is a good idea.
I don't think it's not a good idea, I think it's a great idea, I just would like it to be a better idea.
Well, it did say, it did kinda open the book at the end that it would be reviewed every year. Not, not just by the, the selectmen, like you said, to say, okay, this is good, no, this is no good, it's, it's, it opens it up to all of the boards, all of the employees, both elected, both and appointed, and if there's changes, deletions or additions that need to be done, I think it leaves the door open for that, if it's, if it's gotta be reviewed. Especially we, we spoke with a selectman that said, you know, it's gonna need to be tweaked, so to speak, if, if there are, there are areas, but I myself see nothing wrong with just reminding everyone, we need to work together and act accordingly.
Just for the record, I wanna make sure that the, neither one of the selectmen I talked to said that it needed to be tweaked, I know that's, but, um, I just don't want it to come across that that was what I took from it, it was more of, um, they, the general consensus was that this is a, this is how you should behave.
Right.
Right, and it is fairly common sense, um, and if every, well, yeah, that's, that's all, so after talking to them, I read through it again with that, those, those conversations in mind and I, I saw, like I said, I have two, maybe three things, but I'd be open to a conversation about if we don't like it, what, what would some suggestions be to make it more palatable?
Okay.
Did the public.
Yes, sir, you're, uh, and listen, Amy, if any of the board members have anything, yes, sir, your name and address, please?
Yeah, David Van Dolly, two oh one Cranberry Drive. There hasn't been a need for something like this for a while, right, you operated without this kind of, uh, kind of a requirement, alright? Now you're gonna be, you're all revoted and you're put in by a tent, right, answered us. Now you're gonna be answered to the selectmen, then what would you do, you're gone, okay, but it.
No, that's not true.
So the selectmen, I think it's, is there any in there, I think you said, read something about, you entered to the board, and the board had that, this, do you just say that?
It's, well, there is a part in here about the, um, consequences or, I, I forget how they phrase it, but, uh, compliance and enforcement. The chair has the responsibility of intervening, we read that last time, um, but there is a piece in here that says the Board of Selectmen have.
Yeah.
So you're not gonna answer to us anymore, it's gonna be the Board of Selectmen.
It says in addition.
Like Amy said, too, a particular board in this instance, we're elected, so yes, we do answer you.
Right.
You know, and if you don't want us here, then you, yes, you vote us out, but not, but the select, no, you can't.
So the selectmen, is what it's saying in there, that the selectmen has no decision on that?
Says in addition to any other penalties or remedies as may be provided by the law, the Board of Selectmen may intervene when members' conduct does not comply with the town ethical standards.
So they can intervene in this, what does that mean?
Yes.
What does that mean?
Well, it specifically says, uh, a letter of reprimand, uh, censor or something.
But they can't, and that's the issue, like, they don't have jurisdiction over us for our reason, it's like the checks and balances of the judicial.
But they can still send a letter on misconduct.
All penalties, sorry, all penalties shall require a majority vote of the Board of Selectmen before being imposed upon the members determined to be by violation. There was a range from, okay, here we go, uh, code of ethics, uh, when a member is a violation, when a member violation is apparent as prescribed in the code of ethics, the actions taken may range from a letter of reprimand by the board, a censor, uh, to a censor, to a request for resignation from the position.
A request, so it's a request, or it's not like you're fired, we're elected, we, we, we answer to, like Amy said, to the people.
Okay, so the, the question I would say too, right, is, um, you, you've been operating without this for a long time, transparency, right now in government transparency is so high, we need it, because everyone's thinking, okay, out here, that, look, this guy's gonna tell that guy what to do, okay, therefore, they're not gonna be able to speak on it, so therefore, we're not gonna get what we want out of you to be truthful with us and upfront, if we can't get that transparency. So to me, being independent is gonna allow us the transparency in the town, rather than the selectmen, if these figure it out of line, we're gonna go reprimand them, we'll push them to the side, we'll get rid of them, whatever the, their resignation or whatever led it to them. So to me, I, I see this as, and my guess is, I'm gonna ask this question, where'd it come from? Who wants this and wants it now? And is there any requirement in there for the state? For, okay, where we have to do anything to the state, this is just strictly town, nothing to the state, okay?
I don't know, in my, in my eyes, I read to compliance with the law, members shall comply with the laws of the United States, the state of Massachusetts and the town Halifax and performance of their public duties. These laws include, but are not limited to the United States and Massachusetts state constitutions and statutes. The town Halifax bylaws and policies, election campaigns, financial disclosures, employer responsibilities and open process of government, all of which are hereby incorporated herein by reference and made applicable. So for instance, we would be maybe doing something wrong by not going along with Mara Haley's MBTA.
Bingo.
Please, Mr. Dolly, could you not interrupt the police, let us speak, thank you.
So that, that's a danger that it, it's a weed that can grow and push out and I don't think that it's appropriate to have the Board of Selectmen even think that they could send us a letter telling us to resign. Like, they, they're not our boss and the people are, and that makes them our boss. And so that's like dangerous to the Constitution of the United States of America and our children and grandchildren.
The only thing I, I can think is, this has absolutely nothing to do with that. This has to do with, like I said, common sense, how you treat one another, what you say about other, uh, people in board, you know, treating each other respectfully, I, I don't see this as, yes, you can speak up against, uh, you know, political statements or anything, this is, this is a code of conduct.
If states.
How we treat one another and they use the state, uh, basically their, their laws and recommendation as, as a baseline to how you can and cannot act. I mean, we have had in town several instances of complaints about how people act and say towards one another. Whether they represent the board or they try not to represent the board, there's been, and it's, it's about conduct, it's not about censorship. No, you're not allowed to have an opinion, you, you certainly can voice your opinion, I think this is more just, again, how you go about doing it respectfully.
So here's the good news, right, um, I think the framework of the document is solid. I think that some of the details, to Amy's point, could lead to some holes that can be taken advantage of if, if somebody had enough of a nefarious agenda, if you will, right, so the solution is not scrap the whole thing or pass it for no reason, or just because we're gonna pass it. My suggestion again would be, okay, so what, in these specific sections, and there's only a couple, what can we do to plug that hole?
So. Remove the paragraph.
Well, what, what we?
Well, I think the thing with the, to, to be, we also have to be careful too, right, so I think that what I read, and I'm glad that Amy brought her perspective to it, cause I didn't read it the same way she did. In fairness, I read compliance of law, being, um, you know, I'm a card carrying member of the NRA, right? So I have a second amendment right to carry my firearm everywhere, other than a hospital and a school, right, and a few other places, but I can't, until, hopefully soon, I can't cross over into Rhode Island, I can't carry my firearm into a state where I don't have that Utah license that oversees, right, and so the federal law or the state law, right, does have, there is some overlap. So what I read this as is, we will comply with the Constitution of the United States and with the laws and regulations of Massachusetts and on the state level as an overview to say, you guys do not have the right to supersede that, but to Amy's point, it also opens the door to say, but they can also come and put their foot on your neck. So, I think that there's a very. So, I think that there's a very simple, I don't know how to word it, because I'm not a lawyer, I do numbers, um, that you can put a sentence in that paragraph. Rather than remove the whole paragraph, you can put a sentence in that paragraph that states, that, that, that closes the door for any kind of government overreach. What that would be, I don't know, but I think that that has to be in there, probably by law. But also, what can be put in there to say, but we're not just going to do whatever the new governor decides that she wants us to do, which is not what this is saying.
Right, exactly.
But to Amy's point, but to Amy's point, it is opening, there is a, a door that is cracked there. I didn't read it that way, to her point, she might be, so I'm open to the conversation of it. But I think it can be fixed, is my point.
Right. And I think in your discussion with the selectmen or whatnot, this is not saying, okay, we're censoring you because you feel the second amendment is your right. This has got nothing, this is me, as an example, just as a strange, saying, you're altogether wrong, you're a jerk, because you don't think the same way I do, or we have a difference of opinion. It's how you conduct yourself, it's a code of conduct. It's, it's not a, a redraft of the US Constitution, it's just how we treat one another. It's a code of conduct.
In addition to that, I'll, I'll just refer back to the conduct on social media, right? Which was, and I have check marks next to all but that one, that says, you know, will refrain from commenting or liking posts of, you know, similar responses on social media. So if I say, um, every American should own a gun and be able to protect their home, um, and anything else, and a certain selectman may be on the far left side of that conversation, it feels as though I'm in violation because in some way on my social media, I'm promoting gun violence. Does this open the door? I think the answer is, that's not the intention right now, right? But I, like I tell my kids, if you're, you might not be hungry right now, but think of you in twenty minutes, right? Or you might not have to pee right now, but maybe in twenty minutes. So, let's do that, and just say, let's think about this down the road, because if we just pass it, although it can be revisited every year, I think, let's be honest. Once this document's in, it ain't getting reviewed every year.
It does say that in the, in the very beginning.
It says it can be.
Well, it says it, it's the general intent of, doesn't it?
I got a lot of general intents every year too, but they don't match in past February.
Yep.
And, and a, a lot of this is already, you know, the ethics test that we have to take? That's already all in there, so we already all know this, and we already all have to apply to it, that's the way it is. So like, we're reinventing the wheel, adding things in here, and I don't answer to the board of selectmen, and I'm not going to, um, put myself open to that they can send us a reprimanding letter and tell us to resign, like.
They can't tell you to-
Well, well, it says it, it says it, so like-
No, it says a recommendation too. Doesn't it say recommend? It's not, like he said, they can't, they can't fire you.
It could be bullying. No, but they can ask you to recommend it, and then that letter would be read out loud at a meeting, and then that letter would be damaging to somebody's, and, and it's, it's also reputation, and it's also not really within their purview. So allowing something like that to be in there gives them power over us in a way that could be dangerous. And also just not okay, it doesn't follow our charter.
Hey, also-
For transparency, I asked a question, it's a way that this come, who brought this? Was this a town people? Was this coming somewhere else? Or was this internal here to the, the town building, that we decided we need to do this right now because of what's coming? I mean, what's the-
I think it's, I, I don't have the answer to that directly. If I had to, um, if I had to speculate, I would say that this came out, um, coincidentally after one of our board meetings got rather heated. Um, not heated, energetic, right, passionate. It became rather passionate, right?
Democratic government.
Yeah, um, and so, at the end of the day, I think, um, this was a extra step to say, you've already signed a, an ethics, right, but now this is a code of conduct as a reminder that we should be holding ourselves to a higher standard.
Just to that, just to that point, this, this came out long before our last meeting. It wasn't because of-
No, I'm not.
It, it, this was because of several instances that have happened within town.
Yeah.
Uh, within the way people were handled, the way people were spoken to, the way, the way they conducted themselves outside the, the walls here of, town hall, specifically with the new construction going on in town, and, and yes, people get very passionate and whatnot, and-
Which is a good sign, by the way.
What do you, what do you-
They care about the town.
But also, there's a right way and a wrong way, you know, and that's, and this is, excuse me. And this is not ethics, this is conduct. This is not having, redrawing a whole new set of ethics.
I think it's-
Because we've done that already. We, we've had that, we all, we had to sign that with our other jobs. I, I had to, certainly had to sign on ethics, uh, also, but in the, in, in the same breath, uh, you know, I think, uh, that's all this is, is conduct.
Yeah, no, I get that. I think that, um, I think that the document is great. But I'm sorry, I think the document's really good, but I think it could be better with a spotter too. And so, because I'm not a lawyer, um, I would actually like to submit a couple of questions or suggestions to our town council, to be able to say, if we're all gonna have to sign this, then can, what can we do about this and this?
Yes, ma'am.
Karen Favors, C6, Clalow, Bosworth. Are they telling you that they want you to vote as a group to sign that? It should be individually on whether you want to sign it or not. I, I was on board, I was on finance committee for many, many years, and you do take ethics course. You also sign it over, okay, when you're sworn in. Yes, no need to that? None whatsoever. When you're, when you're voted in by the town members, the selectmen have nothing to do with you. You've taken your oath, you've taken ethics courses, which are required, okay? So you know what is correct and what is not correct. For someone to tell a whole board that they have to, based upon a majority vote, sign something, is absolutely ludicrous. You have your own voice, okay?
We don't sign this individually, Mrs. Favors.
I'm sorry?
This is, this is a vote of a majority of the board, like, like every other board, it's not individual, individual call, it's, it's what, what the town has set up, it's, it's-
But I just said, that's what they're asking you to do. You, you as a member that was voted in by us, the people, okay? Do not have to sign that from any selectman. That's, that's not a requirement of your document.
It's not a requirement.
And, so it should not be a board vote, it should be an individual vote on whether you want to sign it or not sign it.
Yeah.
They cannot start making up their own rules, okay? And then have loopholes in there, and it did say that they could ask for your resignation, and then state, and, and different things. It's just like, we're coming out to the MBTA meeting, right? And we just found out, it was always bylaws, right, where two thirds votes. The state changed it. It's now a majority vote, okay? Simple majority vote. And this is what you're looking at, is having loopholes in there.
That's right.
I, as a member, would never sign that. I've already taken the ethics course, I've already, you know, taken my oath of office to the people and to the town. I'm not, why do I need to sign that? And you're gonna tell someone whether they can post something on Facebook or not? As long as they do not state that they are, they are posting something or speaking to someone as a board member, but as a person-
That's exactly what it says.
Just like Tom Pratt has posted, okay, publicly, or come up to the microphone and said, I'm speaking as a citizen. I am not speaking as a selectman, even though I am a selectman. Same thing, when I was on finance committee, you would go around the table and you would go up to the microphone and you would speak as an individual, and state that fact, so that people understood that it was coming directly from you personally. But for someone to come as government and take, and say, you need to vote as a board to agree to this,
Yeah.
and all of you have to sign it, even though one person might not, or two people might not want to sign it, that's ridiculous.
Yeah. And so, we want the-
Okay, what is the, uh, what is the pleasure of the board? Do we want to, uh?
I'll make a motion not to sign the Halifax Code of Conduct.
Can I make an amendment to that? Because here's my problem, under the same thing that you just said.
Yep.
I also don't agree with voting the whole thing down, because I like the document.
Well, what if we don't sign?
Yeah.
What's, what if we don't sign?
So, so my thing is-
There's nothing, there's nothing to sign.
Are they gonna fire us if we don't sign this?
Before your motions get seconded, or however that works. I, I will not be voting to pass this, as is. But I also do not want to make the stance of, or, and the other option is not at all, nothing at all. So I would like to have a conversation about speaking with somebody that knows what they're doing. Because I think that this, I genuinely, I see the holes, trust me, we don't have to go back through them. I think that this was genuinely designed or presented with the best of intentions.
I don't.
Well, that's your opinion, and that's just like, you said, we all get.
So like, do you have a motion? I have, I have a motion on the floor. Amy, is your motion, did you want to adopt an amendment or change your-
I wouldn't even know where to begin on where, I'm not, and I'm not gonna sit and try to rewrite this, or try to rewrite this. If they want to rewrite something and send it out to us, that they, that we might consider it, then that's up to them. But I, I don't have any, I already applied to the Code of Ethics, I already, I already do all of this stuff, so I don't see any need for it. So I, and I'm not gonna sign that because of the dangers that are in it. And, and, and it's like, accepting a law that you, like, like a bill that has something in there that your kid can go to school and get a vaccine without, because it has a loophole in it. So I am going to stick with my original and say that I am going to not sign that. I, I think that we should deny to sign the Halifax Code of Conduct under the conditions that the board of selectmen does not preside over the planning board.
Okay, so I have a motion on the floor, do I have a second?
Is my only other option, yes, or like, is my only option?
Well, they cannot, they can send us something different, but like, I don't want to spend our energy on rewriting a preamble that has all of these holes out of it, yeah.
That's what I just, my whole monologue was about that, so that's what I'm saying, I'm agreeing.
So I'm just, I'm just gonna say that we're not gonna, I, I wouldn't sign this, because this is, this is allowing somebody else to tell us what to do. We're not employees of the board of selectmen.
Trust me, if we are, I've got a couple of checks that have been misplaced, right? But here's my thing, is, um, I will sec, well, I can't add to it, that's, that's my problem, is I, I want, fine, I'll just put it on record, even though I'm over complicating this thing.
No, I do, I do.
I do not want to, I will not vote to sign this as it is written currently.
Okay.
But I am not opposed to exploring a code of conduct moving forward.
Okay.
I'll sign a code of conduct, just I don't like the way that this one is specifically written for the specific loopholes in it. So, if my only option is either to vote yes with Amy, or vote no against her, and then that means we just push this thing through, then I'm gonna second her, I'm gonna second her motion.
So I do have a motion on the floor, and I have a second not to recommend the code of conduct.
As you-
So just, just for clarifications then, a yes vote would mean it, it's, we're not gonna enforce, or we're not gonna recommend the, the, the code of conduct.
So do you want, I did that the last time.
Yeah, I know, and that's what it was.
That's what I think, I was like, wait, it's a yes vote for the no, right?
Yes, it's a yes vote for the no.
So, um, I move, I'll, 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 I move that, so how would I word that, how I want it?
You move that, a yes vote is to not enforce.
You recommend it, and then vote no against it, you know, so it's in plain, like we did the last time.
Oh, no, no, I, I vote that, I, I, I don't, I don't even want to have recommend in, in my sentence.
So we withdraw your motion?
I, I, so, okay, so clarify how we would vote. I want to turn this down.
So, a yes vote by the member does not recommend that we, uh, im- implement the code of conduct.
Right.
A no vote would mean-
You, that you don't agree with me, okay. All right, okay.
All right, is that clear? So-
Are you gonna do a roll call?
So, I, yes, so.
Brendan Elliott, yes, vote.
A yes vote means you, you were, you were not recommending to imply this, implement it.
Brendan Elliott, yes.
Amy Trup, yes, I do not.
Uh, myself, no.
Oh, here we go. I mean, I, I'm reading this, I don't see anything in it that worries me myself. Um, but I can see what Karen's talking about, and what the people, the audience are talking about. Um, you know, we've already been there, we were elected by the town, and and I don't think I'm ethically bad, or, you know, I try to behave myself best I can, I usually keep quiet, everybody knows that. But, uh, I don't know, it's a tough one. It's a hard vote.
Which I hope I stand is there?
What's, uh, I mean, you, however you want to-
However I vote.
Don't hold yourself, Beth, you're not gonna give me the back end.
Mrs. Favors, please, there's a motion on the floor.
Um. Oh, I'd have to, I'd have to go with a yes too.
Okay.
Motion passes.
So the code, to, to be clear, the code of conduct fails.
I would also like to put on the record that I would like to work either with our town administrator or someone to potentially solve this problem of-
Like I, my question before, what's the, what happens now that we voted it down? What are they gonna do?
Nothing.
Send a letter requesting our resignation?
I don't-
Sorry, not the right time for a joke.
I mean, was that, was that explained, and is, is it like, what's gonna happen to us?
Nothing.
Am I gonna get, am I gonna get my pay cut or something?
Yeah, you always move it, right? Okay, that being said, uh, we have to do, I, I just, for clarification too, it said the update here on Delia Way. Yeah, we did, uh, you know, get a letter, a letter, an email from Amy, uh, saying that, again, this past week prior to when the agenda was posted, we still had nobody that contacted the board requesting to, uh, fill out the proper documents or whatever, and, and so, uh, we removed it.
Um, Delia Way, I, I, they don't, they contacted a board member, and we voted on it on October 3rd to put it on the agenda.
Right.
So I don't understand why-
Well, you sent the email, it said, since nobody went through with the procedure of putting it on the board, you requested that we take it off, off the agenda, so we did.
Oh, no, 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 I think you misunderstood. I sent you a, a different, um, email. I sent you in-
Just a suite.
Yeah, I sent you an email reminding you that Van Donnelly had asked to be on the agenda.
Well, I never got that one.
I didn't, that's the email I sent you. I emailed you a reminder that you must have missed putting that on and had the, the-
Because I had contacted, uh, Cody after Mr., after you contacted Mr. Haddad. I also spoke to Mr. Haddad, and I had town council coming here tonight, that was going, because the selectmen said on, on any discussions of Delia Way, we need town council present. So I made arrangements to have him here with, uh, with Cody.
Thank you. I didn't cancel Delia Way in that email, it was, it was regarding, um, Van's, uh, request that I had forwarded to you. And I forwarded you that email probably the beginning of last week-ish, I mean, I forget. But then when I looked at the agenda and, and I, I was glad to see Delia Way on, but this was separate.
I didn't see any reference, this was, uh, hi Barrett. I didn't see any reference to, uh, to the email from a resident forwarded to you, I'm just reminding you that I'm sure it's just a forgotten item. Thanks, Amy.
Scroll, scroll down. That was the email. It's okay, we'll deal with it next meeting.
This is why is it important that everything comes through the office, since I am one creating and publishing the agenda, please include me on our future correspondence from the residents, so that all necessary items can be included. Thanks, Danielle. Danielle, Amy Trup.
Can we just get it on the next agenda?
See, it wasn't on that meeting, I wasn't here for that meeting, that Delia, what's going on there anyway?
Oh, a resident from Delia Way asked to be on the agenda, so.
As far as what, another- In, in the, in the basis of transparency, transparency-
My chap, and I said it that night.
Yeah.
But that's, that was a different topic altogether.
So they looking to get the road finished, or put a house in the-
They wanted to see what was going on with it.
That's why it was changed to an update.
I mean, the residents that are on the road, he's, he's one of the residents on the road.
Right.
So, he was hoping to get an update on what was going on, since it had been a while since he'd been here, so he just wanted to come and discuss.
He's probably as good as I was, I imagine, you know?
I'm sorry?
His guess is probably as good as I was, like the guy that- His guess is probably good as ours, like the guy that owned it died and I don't know what's going on.
Yeah, no, I know, but just out of respect, I, I brought it up and said it.
Can we put it on the next agenda just to knock it out of the park?
Yeah.
Well, if they wanna come back to talk, why not?
Yeah.
Well, we, we said that before, but what they gotta do is go, you know, make, get on the agenda.
So that was Mr. Che-
Right now that we're talking about it, we have the ability to do it. So I, we voted, it might've been, was it the seventeenth that I, we did it?
I know we voted five zero zero figuring that we, we're gonna have a process done and someone's gonna ask the right questions and, and then when I got that from you, I-
That was from, um, email I forwarded you for Dan, Van Donnelly, who wanted to speak to us on the code of ethics.
Oh, but he also, in your, his emails that he wanted to talk about Delia Way.
No, no.
Okay, let me read that one.
Were you talking about the impact study?
I didn't say you, I didn't-
Well, you mentioned Delia Way.
I didn't mention Delia, I didn't know what that is.
Yeah.
But, uh, I mean, I could just, yeah, it's a very simple question I had, but it wasn't the first shadow.
Also, not to beat a dead horse, we keep talking about this. I think a simple solution is to put it on the next agenda. Would you like me to make a motion? Just to clean it up. I make a motion that we put Delia Way on the agenda for next meeting.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to put Delia Way on the next agenda? Well, is it on the basis of we have some information to find out what we're even gonna talk about?
It's, it's on the basis that clearly somebody on the board is very passionate about having Delia Way on.
Oh, so it's an, an update, so we need the town council here to give us the update on it.
It, it wasn't an update on the first day that we mentioned it, which I don't remember which meeting it was now. It was either October third or October seventeenth. But it was Mike Chapin and I mentioned it that night. That it was Mike Chapin, he's a resident that lives on the street that wants an update on what's going on because they have holes in their street. Where the, not holes, but what do you call it?
The manhole covers a-
So it's like a danger. Yeah, they have, and they have an emergency situation.
It's just like pass your lane and it's just-
Well, then let's put it on for an update and we'll have town council here, we'll take it from there.
Here's the good news, right? I, I'm a big fan of picking the hill to die on and this does not seem like one.
Yeah.
It's like, i- if everything's a big deal, nothing's a big deal. And it seems like that kinda tends to be the road we go down sometimes for no, not for no reason. I'm obviously very passionate for other reasons, but this seems like a very simple solution. We put it on the agenda, we see what they wanna talk about and if it needs, if it requires further action, which we all know what's gonna happen, or we don't know what's gonna happen, but I know where I stand on it, which is we're in a stalemate. And if somebody wants to come in and take their time to, to come in and talk to us about it, they have every right, we should put them on the agenda, that's all.
Yep, and I think that we should make sure that even if a board member, any of us, asks for something to be on the agenda because a resident contacted them, that we actually do so and that it's like kinda more on the way that, um, remember on Mondays, I used to send out an email to everybody and say, "Here's the proposed agenda, does anybody have anything to add or detract?" And I just think that's a great way to go, that way we all do it because we're all voices of the people, it's not just one of us that's a voice of the people. Nobody's supposed to fill out a form to be on the agenda or unless they're doing a site plan modification, unless we actually make that one of the requirements of being on the agenda. But it shouldn't be difficult for a resident-
Going to be contacted, so he'll be here on our next Thursday meeting?
Yeah, he's been watching for it to be on, yeah.
He said that to you?
Yeah.
Okay, we'll do that.
So there'd be no sense in getting town council here for Delia Way if somebody from Delia Way isn't here to enlighten us on what, what they-
He's gotta come down from Boston to attend it and when-
I mean, is it-
We had nothing for him to attend, you know? Why pay the money if we don't, why spend the town's money for-
Well, is, is that what this, is that what this information is here?
Is that what?
Is this, is this information that's in here, Article two, street acceptance petition to be submitted in all of our bylaws on streets and, um, accepting them?
Yes.
In here, in here for Delia Way?
No, nothing's been submitted for Delia Way.
No, I mean, I meant for reference.
Oh, that's, yes, I put it in there cause I also thought we, we were gonna be talking about Ryder Way and, uh, cause I had a discussion with Steve Hayward and I checked on, on Hilda Lane to find out why they weren't being plowed, you know, the street, and it's basically because it's a driveway. And then it, and, uh, there was a couple of the, uh, was it Bourne?
Spencer? No, not.
Uh, Dancis Lane?
Yep.
I don't even know where that is. But anyway, uh, it was, it seemed like there was an awful lot of streets under this, under the same circumstances we're running into.
Yeah.
And I guess from what I understand, uh, Steve was explaining to me that other towns, if they're not an accepted street, they're not, which I don't see how they can do that, but-
So the way, the way I see this Delia Way thing is, is if a, if a resident reach, reaches out and says, "We wanna be on there" and they wanna come in and take the time out of their day to, and they go, "What's the update?" And we go, "We got nothing," that's on them, right? So if we won't have any extra information, or maybe we will in the passing of the time-
Yeah, but is it, is it worth of the paid town council to come for Delia Way?
That was the whole thing.
If, if we don't have anything-
I don't think at the next meeting. I think what, having somebody that clearly wants to come in and talk to us about Delia Way, they're gonna come in, present themselves or whatever they wanna talk about, and then we'll decide what to do, the course of action from there. And if that is then town council, then, then we'll have a better grounds to justify spending the money, but I don't think it would be for the next meeting. I think the next meeting is just giving a resident their due, you know, right to come in and talk to us, that's all. So.
I agree.
But we pass, right? Do we pass, do we vote?
Yep. Oh, did we vote? No, we didn't vote. Can we, we have a motion and a second on the floor, should we vote?
To have Delia Way on the agenda.
Hold on a second, please.
Insert Jeopardy music here.
Okay. Yeah, let's do that.
Okay.
There's a motion on the floor and a second. Uh, we'll go for a voice vote.
Aye.
Amy?
Aye.
Rick?
Yes.
And I vote no. It passes, three to one.
Cool.
And then we have-
Oh, let's do the minutes then.
And then we have email correspondence, right? As well?
Yes, we do. But first is the minutes, let's get them out of the way. We can do that. We have the minutes for the Halifax Planning Board meeting minutes Thursday, November seventh, two thousand twenty-four. Anybody have any changes, deletions, corrections? I personally didn't see any. Okay, do I have a motion to accept the minutes as presented for Thursday, November seventh, two thousand twenty-four?
What is it, you forgot something, back to me.
Oh, sorry, I need to be, I was trying to turn, close the conversation.
Uh, I'm, I'm, a motion to accept the minutes.
Okay.
Do I have a second? No second. I have a motion and a second. Uh, I'll ask for a voice vote.
Yes.
Aye.
Amy?
Obstand.
Myself, yes.
Yes.
Rick, yes. Three, two, one.
Well, three, zero, abstain, well, does it, is it, I didn't, I didn't fail it, I just abstained.
Three, oh, one.
Three, zero to one abstention.
We're just forgetting about that.
Yeah, three dash zero dash one.
We gotta start using it.
Okay, uh, email from the, uh, HFA regarding the proposed remodel of Walmart. Questions regarding architectural design restrictions. I understand, uh-
Do you want me to read it into record?
Was this, this was sent to the planning board? Yeah, I got it.
Do you want me to read it into record?
Yeah, sure, why not?
Alright, I will read into record, um, a email from Desiree Gouveet, um, on November fifteenth at eight thirty-five AM. There's an attachment. I don't have the attachment. Um, "Good morning Danielle, uh, Dr. Bailey directed me," I'm sorry, Dr., Mr. Bailey, I, Mr. Bailey directed me to you for help answering a question I had about the proposed remodel of the Walmart in Halifax. "Does the planning board have any architectural design restrictions or paint color restrictions for the outside of the buildings? For example, some jurisdictions do not allow primary colors or only allow a certain percentage of the building to be painted. I appreciate your insight, thank you." HFA, which is, um, in Bentonville, Arkansas. Desiree Gouveet. Ed Bailey has, um, an email-
Is the building inspected correctly?
Yes, Mr., um, Mr. Bailey. So, "Good afternoon," um, sent this email. Um, I, I stopped because it's from November fourteenth at three eighteen PM and Desiree answered on November fifteenth, two thousand twenty-four, so I guess I read it backwards. But anyway, "Good afternoon, Desiree, Chelsea forwarded your questions on to me. We will just need a letter from the named contractor relinquishing control and information for the new contractor so we can add it to the permit. Um, two, yes, the fire chief will be included on the permit review. Three, no, whatever that is. Four, fees are due just prior to issuance of the permit. Five, digital is fine, we have gone online since July first and prefer as much to stay in the portal as we can keep there. And six, fourteen wall signs, A, such sign and/or no part of, include the display surface shall not project more than six inches from the building surface. B, the maximum height of a wall sign shall not exceed two feet. The length shall not exceed sixty percent of the horizontal building frontage of each said business. C, where two or more wall signs are affixed to one wall, the gross display area shall be the sum total of all signs." So this is our sign by law, it looks like. D, wall signs shall not extend higher than the eve line or top of the power pad wall of the principal building. E, the size of signs attached to buildings may be increased in area over allowable size by twenty-five percent for every hundred feet of building setback. This shall apply to buildings setback more than a hundred feet from the road right away and the increase may be prorated according to the actual setback distance. If the wall sign is bigger than ten percent of the area it is affixed to, it is then considered a billboard. Special permits are available for non-conforming signs through the planning board. Seven, the building department does not have architectural standards outside of seven eighty CMR. The planning board would need to be contacted regarding their architectural standards, but to my knowledge, there are not any paint color restrictions. If you need anything else, feel free to contact me." So, um, that was from Ed Bailey, written by Chelsea. And we don't have the November thirteenth email.
So that's why, that was on the fourteenth and then hers was on the fifteenth, basically saying to us, is, does the planning board have any architectural design restrictions?
Yeah, so I guess.
Number seven on his on the fourteenth was saying, you'll have to check with the planning board. It's on the fifteenth, that's what she's doing, she's checking with us.
Thank you, that. So I'm thinking to myself that, is this in the historical district, I believe, Walmart?
No.
So it's just outside of it?
No, the historical district stops. For like, like at the driveway for Halifax Country Club, that, that's pretty much, you know, right next to the new lot, the, the new vacant lot.
Yeah, the new law is right in the end.
That's, that's the line.
Okay, right, and it doesn't pick up again, sorry, I couldn't remember where that was.
As far as I know, unless, it's as far as my best of misknowledge.
Because I, alright, okay. I think I have them out.
I do know, you know, way back when the, uh, Walmart first came in, I don't know if you'd call them architectural design, but there was a long list of conditions.
Right.
You know, uh, fences, grass area, uh, the dormers out front, as long as they remove them and, uh, shielding on the lighting. I think there was plants or abreviating or something in the back, there was a long list.
Is it too, is it too easy of an answer to say, "Please refer to all of the requirements that were requested of you at the time of construction"?
Well, they were specifically asked about architectural restrictions. I, the only, the only architectural, and I, again, this was a zoning thing. It was in our, it was the, uh, at the time, we were the only Walmart in the chain that had dormers in the front because it was in the, in the center of our town. But other than that, other than being the, the smallest Walmart in the chain, there were no other, uh, 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 you only, you know what? There might've been architectural, uh, restrictions cause remember they came, they came before the, I wasn't on the planning board, but it was on the zoning board. They wanted to put an addition on to the, as you're looking at the Walmart, would have been to the right, like on the, on Ponce's side. And I think for, for every reason, either, I couldn't tell you if they bailed out or it was just turned down. So I think some research had probably, I guess you'd call that an architectural design if they were gonna add, put an addition on to the building and-
Well, then it would go to setbacks.
Then is there any, do we have anything that restricts color?
Not that I know of.
I don't, we don't have it.
Unless like you said, it was in the historic district or something.
Right.
Which I don't care, I think it'd be a bad business decision, but, you know, they came in and painted the whole thing hot, pink that like blew in the dark under a black light, but-
Yeah.
If there's no restrictions, they would have been.
Well, don't they have like their own color scheme like most stores?
A little orange.
It like, it-
So I guess we just refer to doing some research and, I mean, I wouldn't even know where to look, but I'll refer to you.
It's just, it would just be in our bylaws.
Hey, heavy lies the crown, pal.
Well, I would just say be able to compare it to the conditions that were agreed upon back in nineteen ninety-something, whatever it was.
Yes. So I would like to see the file. Maybe we can put it on our next agenda and have the file here.
Good idea. And then even if there were architectural designs that meet the conditions that were set before, in, on the basis of it's not gonna be any substantial change to the design of what was previously approved. Something to that effect. Again, I'd like, you know, they're certainly within their rights to submit a plan and have, we'll take a look at it, you know, and go from there.
Like if they're gonna build out like a whole auto body shop off to the side of it so you can get your tires and oil done, it's like, hmm.
That would be to the east side, I believe that's where it was.
So put on for, do some research and put it on for next meeting, the next meeting?
Yes.
Yeah, at least, uh, yeah.
Does that even need to be a motion or is that just a suggestion?
How about, no, I don't think it needs to be a motion, how about we just-
It doesn't need to be a motion.
Ask Danielle to, uh, bring the file.
We can pull the file.
And the site plan would be great.
I'm sure.
The signed one.
She, she has her hand up.
Do they know what they're gonna be doing with stop and shop right now?
I mean, the only thing that we heard is that, um, from a tractor trailer guy that said a sister store would be coming in, but that's not confirmed. It's a tractor trailer guy that went by us in traffic, you know? So, but I would say that, I would say that maybe he knows something from working for them, but-
Probably what's going on.
Yeah.
I got vicious rumors, wanna hear vicious rumors?
Sure.
The rumor was that it was, uh, it was gonna open up to stop and shop, not even though they had this, a sister grocery store, Han, Hanifitz.
Yeah, that's, that's, that's-
And that was, that was probably from the driver's assistant. It could be, you know, it's just-
What's the other helping job?
Not Trader Joe's.
A lot of them have vacant buildings.
Not Aldi.
I know, it's-
Nothing. It's all talk at this point. It's a definite baby. Okay, we have good, we got minutes, we got, uh, anything else?
I don't think so.
Our next meeting is December fifth, two thousand twenty-four.
My motion to adjourn.
Do I have a second?
I do, second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Motion carried, unanimous.
Let me just say-